All right, everybody, we're going to go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Oakdale City Council, October 29th, 2024. Sarah, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember Ingebretson.
Here.
Councilmember Morecambe.
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring.
Here.
Mayor Zabel.
Here. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. First up on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Councilmembers, we have a slightly amended version in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Checking.
Motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next up, we have approval of the minutes. Two sets in front of us tonight. First up, workshop meeting minutes from October 20, October 8th, 2024. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? Look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the workshop meeting minutes from October 8th, 2024 are approved. Next up, we have regular meeting minutes from October 8th, 2024. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? Look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Checking.
Motion of the second. Final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the regular meeting minutes from October 8th, 2024 are approved. Next up on our agenda are, is public hearings. We have a number of them tonight. First up is a public hearing for the issuance of an on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license to Quantum Sports LLC. Do we have a staff presentation?
Me.
Administrator Volkers, welcome.
Mr. Mayor of City Council, this, the application before you tonight for consideration is for a new on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license for Quantum Sports, as the mayor said, doing business as Smash Hub. A public hearing notice was published 10 days prior, as required. In addition, the Oakdale Police Department did do the background checks and found no disqualifying factors. So what's before you today is an action to, a suggestion to approve the issuance of the on-sale license.
Councilmembers, any questions for Chris?
Just a quick question.
Councilmember Morecambe.
Thank you. I'm just curious why it's only till March 31st of 2025. Why such a short period?
The license year, Councilmember Morecambe, is April 1st, so if they're late, they only get it till the next renewal.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions for Chris? At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing and invite comment from the audience on this specific agenda item. If anybody would like to speak to this item, please feel free to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments are confined to three minutes per individual and 20 minutes in total. At this time, please feel free to step up if you'd like to speak on this public hearing. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for council consideration. Councilmembers, any final questions? Look for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a new on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license to Quantum Sports LLC, DBA Smash Hub at 895 Hale Avenue North, for the current term, which expires on March 31, 2025.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the issuance of a liquor license has been approved. Next up, we have another public hearing for certifying delinquent utility and inactive accounts. Chris, staff presentation. Mr. Staska, our finance director, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This public hearing is the annual certification for the delinquent utilities and inactive accounts to Washington County for payment on the 2025 property taxes. The certification is the city's collection process and follows state statutes. Currently, there are 293 accounts with an approximate balance of 138,000 for certification. If the certification is adopted by council, any unpaid amounts would be submitted to the county. And just to note, staff would be collecting on these balances until December 15th. And so at that point, 138,000 in 290 accounts, that is the maximum that would be submitted. So any collections until then would be included in their balances, and then the remaining would be submitted to the county. And I stand for any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions for Kyle? All right. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing on this specific agenda item, similar as before. If anybody would like to speak to the certification of delinquent utilities and inactive accounts, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes and no more than 20 minutes total. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back for council consideration. Councilmembers, final questions? Look for motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-91, certifying outstanding delinquent utility and inactive accounts to Washington County for inclusion on 2025 property taxes.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Final conversation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and resolution 2024-91 is adopted. Next up, we have a public hearing on amendments to the Oakdale Marketplace and Oakdale Station planned unit developments. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes.
City planner, Luke McClanahan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'll try and be as brief as possible, but there's a lot of details here, and I want to cover the important information. So for these two planned unit development amendments, the location is shown there on the screen. So the Oakdale Station is on the left and Oakdale Marketplace is on the right. So just for geographical reference, I-694 in the west and 34th Street on the north. So the area was originally designated for commercial uses back in the mid 2000s, so that was pre-recession era. There are two different PUDs, as I mentioned, but essentially they function as a unified neighborhood. Market changes have occurred since the original plans have been adopted, and deviations to the development, or to the area have been approved to facilitate certain development, notably the Harland Apartments, which is not shown there on the screen, but it's kind of in the, in the middle of the site there. And then several other deviations have been approved by council in the past to facilitate development, notably a couple restaurant areas that were designated as part of the original PUD site plan were, have been changed to different uses. So if you recall from October of last year, in response to a development proposal located within the Oakdale Marketplace PUD, the city council directed staff to conduct a PUD study of the area. So the study began in early 2024. The city hired a consultant, WSB, and they have a specialist with urban planning and economic development. And if you recall, the study was discussed earlier this year by the city council. And an overarching goal of the study was to determine appropriate land uses for both PUD areas, and the proposed amendments that we're bringing forward tonight are based on the study's findings, the consultant's recommendations, and guidance from the city council. So in general, we're proposing to allow additional land use options throughout the area. So here's another image here of the neighborhood. Just for reference, this is a more detailed map with current uses, and we can refer back to it if needed. So moving on, this is the original site plan for Oakdale Marketplace. So it's the area from Pins on the left-hand side, all the way to Target on the right-hand side. And there are specific designations for each tract within this site plan, and they are difficult to read. But for example, if you, if you're able to zoom in closer to the, to the particular sites there, they would, you would see retail, restaurant, and so on. And development must be in substantial conformance with this PUD site plan unless a deviation is approved by the city council. So moving out to Oakdale Station, this is the original site plan. There's actually two site plans. This is site plan option one. And just for reference where my laser pointer is, that's LA Fitness or the current, the former location there. And then to the south there, some conceptual development, obviously, or if you're familiar with that site, that's undeveloped land. And here is Oakdale Station, the second site plan option. So before moving on, I want to make, or just take a moment to explain what the current uses are per the PUDs. So commercial uses are allowed, with the exception of ideal storage. That was essentially a non-conforming use that can continue to operate as is. And then we have the Harland Apartments, as mentioned, kind of in the center of the site. They went through the process to allow residential use on that site. Again, development must be in substantial conformance with the site plans in place, which is an essential part to understand about the PUD. And then moving on to the proposed amendments. So based on the analysis that was conducted by our consultant, and also from the city's feedback, from stakeholder input, the following options are being proposed for this area. And I just want to highlight some key themes before I move into the individual tracks. So some of the key themes here, we want to designate land use options throughout the area. We want to allow residential on very specific lots, and we want to specify certain commercial uses. And we also want to introduce additional exterior design standards, more signage options, and additional landscaping, particularly along the southern portion of this area to help buffer uses from the residential, the existing residential neighborhood to the south. So here is site plan option two. And these two proposed site plan options are, they're not mutually exclusive of each other, and they're meant to provide options for development of the area. So here's what we refer to as Tract A. So this is a couple parcels south of LA Fitness. And again, this is a vacant site, about 15 acres. And permitted uses that we're proposing, commercial, retail, office, that doesn't really change from what's there in place right now in terms of allowed uses. But we also want to open it up to medium and high-density multifamily use. And this presents a couple scenarios showing residential, what residential development could look like on this site. And again, we're leaving the door open to allow commercial development, if that is suitable here, if a developer proposes such use. Moving on to Tract One, this is the ideal storage site. And it is currently, as you know, commercial storage, approximately five acres. Proposed permitted uses here include self-service storage, so that can continue to be operated there, commercial, retail, or service use, brew pubs, taprooms, micro distilleries, and multifamily residential, four to 12 dwelling units per acres for townhomes. Moving on to Tract Two, so this is currently a 1.5 acre vacant site. Proposed permitted uses include commercial, retail, service, restaurant, including fast food, brew pubs, taprooms, distilleries, or multifamily residential use for townhomes. Moving on to Tract Three, so this is the vacant site at the southeast quadrant of 34th Street and Marketplace. Currently, it's vacant, and it's about two acres in size. And proposed permitted uses here, this tract must contain at least one restaurant, which can be a convenience food restaurant with or without drive-through food services, or, when we say convenience food, that's fast food. And so at least one restaurant as a standalone use, or it can be incorporated into a multi-tenant building, multi-tenant commercial building, that is. And a two-building scenario would be permitted onsite, provided that each building contains a restaurant. And again, the restaurants can be fast food with, with or without drive-through food service. Moving on to Tract Four, so this is the northeast quadrant of 32nd Street and Marketplace. So it's the parcel that is south of McDonald's, west of Target, about five acres. Proposed permitted uses, multi-tenant commercial, retail, or service restaurants, including fast food and drive-through food services, brew pubs, taprooms, micro distilleries, and then more than one building would be permitted on the site, provided that meets site plan standards. And then mixed use would be permitted, provided that both commercial and residential uses are contained within a single building. The final tract here is number five. It's a vacant site, approximately 2.75 acres, and it is the southern portion of the Target parking lot. Proposed permitted uses here include commercial, retail, service, restaurants, including fast food with, with or without drive-through food services, brew pubs, taprooms, distilleries, and then more than one building would be permitted onsite, provided that it meets site plan standards. And finally, we have some additional standards for the two PUD areas. So the first point I want to make is just that a joint pylon sign off I-694 would be allowed, subject to certain conditions that were, that have to be met. The second point here is that we want to allow more wayfinding signage, and that's just to help visitors, customers navigate the area. We have a provision here for four-sided architecture, just requiring more consistent facades, materials, designs throughout a building, so there's no apparent backside of a building. The full, or all elevations of the building would be attractive and welcoming and, in terms of maintaining a consistent character for the building. Next, for sidewalks, a sidewalk must be installed on the parcel that is located south of 32nd Street whenever it develops. Additional landscaping, that's another provision that we're proposing for the southern portions, or southern parcels of this area to help buffer nearby residential uses. And then finally, we're proposing a sewer, a availability charge, surcharge for new residential development that is, that would increase the flow rate that is above the comp plan allowance. And this is just a new provision that we've added since the planning commission back in August, when they, when they reviewed this request. So a couple other changes I want to just note here, since the two PUD amendments went to the, the planning commission for review back in August. So each PUD was divided into an ordinance and resolution, and that's just to help better separate the zoning changes from the changes to the original PUD site plans. And as noted earlier, we're, we propose expanding the types of restaurant uses allowed throughout most of the PUD areas. And we also clarified that brew pubs, taprooms, and distilleries would be permitted uses. And before I conclude, I just want to acknowledge that we received a few written comments regarding the PUD amendments, and they were previously forwarded to the city council for review and consideration well ahead of this meeting. The planning commission, as I mentioned, they heard this request back in August, on August 1st. They held a public hearing, and the planning commission recommended approval of the Oakdale Station PUD amendment. The planning commission did not recommend approval of the Oakdale Marketplace PUD amendment. Staff recommends approval of the two PUD amendments. And I just want to remind the council, this is a public hearing, and staff would be happy to answer any questions. If there are any specific legal questions, of course, we have our city attorney on hand here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Councilmembers, any questions for Luke right off the bat?
How about our city attorney?
Never know.
I wasn't asking if you had any questions. I was asking if we had questions for you.
Oh, sorry.
Come on, Jim.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing pertaining to amendments to the Oakdale Marketplace and Oakdale Station planned unit development. The rules of public comment have been posted in council chambers. Again, three minutes, time limit per person, no more than 20 minutes, is reserved for public comment. If you would like to step up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city administrator, city clerk, and Mr. Thompson. Jack Perry here from the Taft Law Firm. I'm going to take three minutes, both for Marketplace, or Oakdale Marketplace LLC, and for Launch Properties LLC. I sent a letter to you-
Mr. Perry, you individually are capped at three minutes. If somebody else would like-
I can do it in one minute.
Perfect. Thank you.
I sent you a letter last night, and what you saw in there is something you'll never see. Three different law firms, all representing different parties, told you on June 4th, August 1, August 1, and now tonight, the same thing. Or you just don't agree on anything. What we are saying, in essence, is what the city planner just told you is fundamentally legally flawed. And it's fundamentally legally flawed because the planning department thinks that the plan attached to the PUD agreement trumps the PUD agreement. The problem with that, I will read the language to you, was written by your counsel, Tim Keane. allowable uses invested rights. This is what you agreed to. 11A. Except for the special conditions set forth in Section 10, allowable uses within the PUD shall be governed by the, not the plan, C-2, comma, community commercial zoning district. The intent of the PUD is consistent with the intent of the C-2 district, which is provided for retail and service uses, which deal directly with the customer for whom the goods or services are furnished. Next, next paragraph talks about vested rights. Paragraph 16B. Excuse me, 16G has an integration clause. And so what you have is you have an agreement that trumps what the planning commissioner just, or the planning department just told you, presumably what your city attorney has told you, and said that we don't care what's in the plan and the plan itself. The construct, the size, et cetera, fine. But as it relates to the uses, the allowable uses invested rights are set forth in 11, paragraph 11A and 11B. And to be clear, if you go forward with this, you will be sued on this. We would prefer not to sue our regulator, but we will, because we have to. You do not have the ability under this agreement to unilaterally do anything with this beauty. Period. End of story. And there's consequences if we sue you. This is not a situation where, where all we seek is a declaratory judgment that says we win or you win.
Mr. Perry, your time has expired.
I will finish my sentence. Thank you. This is a situation where there are constitutional issues called the compensable takings clause of both the federal and state constitution. If you're liable, you pay for damages, you pay for my fees, as well as your own fees. You also are liable under contract damages-
Mr. Perry, please take your seat. Your time has expired. Thank you.
You're also liable under mandamus damages under 586.09. You can do what you want to do, but we're going forward.
Mr. Perry, take your seat, please.
We got-
Your time has expired.
I don't care.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak under the public hearing tonight? If so, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back up for council consideration. City Attorney Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Because of the threatened lawsuit over the Oakdale Marketplace PUD, I am going to recommend that you not act on that tonight. We just got, received the letter late in the day yesterday, and we have added an agenda item tonight for me to meet with you in closed session to discuss that threatened lawsuit. I want to emphasize that we will not be meeting to discuss the merits, pros, or cons, whether these are good land uses or not. We're going to be meeting in closed sessions solely so I can talk to you in confidence about the merits, pros, and cons of any potential lawsuit. So I recommend not acting on the Oakdale Marketplace PUD tonight. You're free to act on the Oakdale Station PUD if you want. There are, there's no controversy over that one, as I understand it. And I think the developer would prefer to move forward with that, but you can act on that one if you want to.
So Jim, what would be the, what would be the action item or the language to move past the first two items listed under public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in the agenda under item, public hearing C, the first two have to do with the resolution and the ordinance with respect to Oakdale Marketplace. Those are the ones I'm recommending that you do not act on tonight. We'll bring it back at a future council meeting.
So what is the language to move past those and proceed with the Oakdale Station? Is it a motion to table?
Just, you can, a motion to table is fine, or to continue to a future meeting. Maybe, I would say just continue to a future meeting. We'll make sure that the developer and his attorney and gets notice, and they're aware of that meeting when it's scheduled.
Okay.
Just like I did for tonight's meeting.
So I will make, I'll make a motion to continue consideration of resolution 2024-89 and an ordinance number 937 to a future meeting. Jim, language, good?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those are continued to a future meeting. Next up, we have resolution 2024-88. Councilmembers, any questions for staff, or Jim, or Chris on, on that item? I'll look for motion. Chris, were you going to say something? You kind of leaned forward there. Okay. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2024-88, amending the Oakdale Station planned unit development plan to establish additional design standards and to establish additional site plan options.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Checking.
Motion of the second. Final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and resolution 2024-88 is adopted. Another action item. Jake, would you take that for us?
Sure. I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 936, amending the Oakdale Station planned unit development to allow residential use on certain property.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance 936 is adopted. Next up is open forum. Before we get to that, I do have a few proclamations to cover tonight. They're here somewhere. I know they are. First up is a proclamation recognizing National First Responders Day, which was yesterday. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas 911 dispatchers, emergency medical services, fire personnel, law enforcement, and search and rescue teams protect and aid the public when there is an emergency or crisis. And whereas after the Boston Marathon bombing in 2013, police officer Sean Collier was shot to death by bombing suspects while responding to a report of a disturbance. And whereas soon after, Officer Collier's brother began a movement to recognize and honor the men and women who are first on the scene of emergencies and who risked their lives to save others. And whereas every day, first responders risk their own safety and the performance of their duties to protect citizens. And whereas first responders are at the ready to aid others 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas first responders undergo significant education, training, and personal sacrifice to achieve the expertise needed to respond to every type of emergency or crisis. And whereas in 2019, legislators established October 28th as First Responders Day in the nation. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim October 28th as First Responders Day in the city of Oakdale. I know I speak for all of my colleagues and all of our residents when we offer a very heartfelt and deep thank you to our, our first responders in this community. The situations and crises they encounter every single day are unimaginable to most of us, but routine for them. And the, the manner in which they handle it with dignity and grace and compassion is something all of us are proud of, and we are deeply appreciative. So to Chief Newton and Chief Wold, thank you to your tremendous teams. This city owes you all a tremendous debt of gratitude. So thank you. We also have three proclamations that I issued recognizing business anniversaries in our community, something that we've done for a number of years now, in a show of appreciation to businesses that are calling our community home, employing a lot of people in our community. Canvas Health celebrated their 55th anniversary as an organization on October 20th. So I was honored to go by their campus in Stillwater, on Stillwater Boulevard here in Oakdale. Congratulate them on behalf of the city for 55 years of tremendous and irreplaceable service to not just our community, not just the East Metro, not just the Twin Cities, but across, to people across the state. It's pretty, pretty incredible. On October 24th, we also recognize Hearing of America Day. Dr. Jerry over there has done a tremendous job supporting residents and their hearing needs in our community for 10 years now. Dr. Jerry has been an ardent supporter of the city, causes in our city, participation in the Business Retention Program, Summer Fest, anything he can do to help build culture and community here in our city, he, he's always willing to do. It was a great celebration out there on the 24th, in conjunction with the Woodbury and Oakdale Area Chambers of Commerce, because he's very active in both of them. So it was nice to recognize Hearing of America on the 24th. And then on the 25th, we recognized the Waters Oakdale and their 10th anniversary in our community. I was honored to go out to that event and was joined by County Commissioner Karwoski. Stan was, I don't know if he was a city council member. Where's Lori? Was he mayor in 2014?
I think he was.
I think he won the election in November 2014, so he might have been a council member at that time. But just to hear how, you know, think about all of the work that the city put into redeveloping that site, to creating amazing amenities in our community, whether it's Hy-Vee, whether it's the other businesses there, but also carving out space for senior housing, which is absolutely a need everywhere. And the services that they provide to take care of their residents, truly amazing. Had the opportunity to chat with a number of residents there during that event, just to hear the, the love and appreciation they have for their staff, for the environment. It's really nice to have the Waters here in Oakdale. So we recognize their anniversary on October 25th. So congratulations to all three of those businesses for many years here in Oakdale, and hopefully many, many more. We are still under open forum. This is an opportunity for anybody who is in the audience that would like to step up to the podium and share whatever is on your mind. Please feel free to do so. We ask that you begin with your name and address for the record. Similar to public hearings, comments are limited to 20, or three minutes per individual and 20 minutes overall. But please feel free to step up and share whatever is on your mind. But please feel free to step up and share whatever is on your mind. Welcome.
I wasn't ready for this, but apparently I am. Hi, I'm Samantha Jean Cornell. I live at, I'm sorry, I'm very bad at public speaking, but I live at three-nine-five Cimarron, Lake Elmo, Minnesota, five-five-zero-four-two? Yeah? Okay. Okay. You guys ever feel like God sent you somewhere to be somewhere in the exact moment that you're there? Well, that's why I'm here today. Okay. This is really hard.
Take your time.
I've had a lot of dreams and I'm, like, since I was little, I've been dreaming of all these things. And I had really big dreams and I never thought they would come true like this. I'm literally living in my dream and it's really weird. And I, it's so much. I'm so sorry. It's beautiful. It's very beautiful, but I'm so sorry. The presidents do not deserve to be idolized. I have a whole thing written down, which is why it's a little harder because there's only three minutes and I'm sorry. Like, I got a lot more than three minutes worth. So this isn't like off the top of my head and so I'm, I'm trying my best, but and it's a lot.
If, if you would like to submit written comments to our city clerk?
No, I have to. Enough is enough. We've been hurt for far too long. I've been at the bottom for frickin' ever. I've been through a lot of pain. A lot. And I'm sick of watching everyone else go through it too. I don't know how I'm going to change the world. I need everybody's help to do it. But God speaks to us and through us and for a while I've been called crazy and all these things, but I've been talking to myself and it's not me talking to myself all the time and it's not me talking sometimes and it's really hard to explain. I'm sorry, guys. It's, it's a lot. Hard to open up. I'm finally using my voice, which I honestly don't pull me over, but my friggin' headlights out, my taillight doesn't work, friggin', my car is breaking down. I ain't got no money to pay for them bills. I'm worried about feeding my friggin' child in my stomach. I have a plan on how we can do this and Costco and Sam's Club have a lot that the world needs at the moment. And if I were to, I don't know what I'm asking for, but if people just gave a little and had less greed and I don't know, just, it's hard, you guys. I'm sorry. Not everyone's going to believe what I have to say and that's okay. I'm willing to take that. I was gonna make myself go and drive down the highway super fast and make the police call, pull me over because I went to the police and I told them and they sent me home and it was for a reason. They didn't think I was going crazy or anything like that, but oh, I'm, okay. Just time for a change.
Thank you.
I need to go home and feed my kid.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak under open forum tonight? Welcome.
Hi, my name-
Go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members for giving us a chance to just talk briefly real quick today about some of our concerns. My name's Matthew Beeball. I live at sixty-five ninety-second Street North in Oakdale off Greenway Avenue. And this is Joe Stoi.
My name is Joe Stoi, S-T-O-I. And I live at one sixty-eight Greenway Avenue. Been there since nineteen fifty-nine. But I got a little problem with my neighbor. I brought some pictures. He's got thistle. He's been there three years. And I had problems with him. His kids throwing rocks at my house, my three dogs I had at that time, and my car. And I, I give him a little heck about it. So anyway, now, the people who lived there before, they lived there for 50 years or better. And they had flowers along the side of their house. Now it's all thistle. I suppose the birds put it there. But it seems like all these years that them flowers were there for forty, fifty years, easy. So anyway, I talked to him about it. He was going to kill it. And then, I don't know if you guys have ever seen this. You ever see these weeds that go alongside a fence? They get about this high and you trim them, right? Well, this tree grew to be this big and hanging over in my yard. He finally, I was after him to cut it down. He cut it down. But he gets, he gives me a smart attitude about it. See, that's, that's what I, I don't like. I don't like to be talked smart. You know, either do it or not do it. So anyway, they're still there. I got pictures of the thistle that he's got growing here. If you guys like to look at it, you can. But my daughter took pictures and I've seen, I went over here and I've talked to Oakdale about this. And I talked in, in the spring of the year, I told them about this. And I talked to a lady there and she told me she was gonna come up and take a look what I had. She never come. So I went here about two weeks ago and I met a guy by the name of Chris and he said he'd come. Well, about four days he was there and he looked it over. He says, "I don't think we can do anything about this because there's a state law about weeds." And I said, "You mean to tell me?" They didn't tell me this at first. I don't know why. But that thistle is coming down in my yard. And I, I don't want it there. It's about this high right now.
So council members, one of our concerns is, and I'm here in support of my neighbor Joe. I've been a resident for 35 years here in Oakdale and Joe's been a resident for 59 years. One of our concerns really, what we're trying to get to the point is, is we have brought up concerns with this, with the city and the Oakdale Police Department. Joe's, one of Joe's concerns here is the growing weeds from neighbors. There are other concerns that I wanted also bring up. This, the, the traffic, the speeding, neighbors that are disrespectful, yard keep, and things like that. We bring these concerns up to the Oakdale Police Department. They take notes, but nothing really ever gets done. My, my major point is, is that, of course, me and Joel, we live in the older section of the city of Oakdale, which they used to call Tanner's Lake Heights. And we, we feel that we're not getting, we're forgotten in, in this portion of our city. And we want to bring this awareness up to the council members to please not forget our old residents, our old portion of the city, Tanner's Lake Heights. We don't want to be forgotten. And we do want the police department, when we make concerns, to actually take some action. I worked at three M for thirty-nine years. I'm finally retired. And most of my years here living at, in Oakdale, I, I was working ten, twelve hours a day. Now I'm retired and I'm finally getting to see what's going on in my neighborhood a little bit. And I really am appalled and very surprised of the things that are happening in the great city of Oakdale. I was, I was born here and I continued to, to be a resident here and own a home here because I felt Oakdale was a great community. Real quick, I know I'm running out of time, but I just want to bring awareness to the council members that one of me and Joe's concerns are and many other, other neighbors in our, in our area. Of course, new residents are coming in, diversity is happening, which is great. But there should be more awareness of the new residents coming in. And I wish there was a way that the city of Oakdale could propose and notify new residents coming into the city of Oakdale, to the city of Oakdale, the rules and the regulations of keeping a home proper and with respect. And we're losing a lot of that in Oakdale. And me and Joe wanted to bring these concerns up. His concerns are more specific, mine are more broad. And we wish that the Oakdale Police Department would take a little bit more action.
I just want to say we had a little boy a few years ago get killed on Greenway. He was six years old. And his parents live kind of kidney quarter from me. And they're gone now too because they're all in the place where we all go. But anyway, and we had a little boy get hit in front of my house. My wife seen it. When she was alive, she seen that, that little boy get killed, I mean, got hurt. But you just can't seem to stop that traffic there. And I'm trying to get them to put a stop sign up there on the hill because they come flying over that hill. I've been in two accidents pulling out from my driveway. You can't get out of their way. They're just coming too fast.
Again, are noteworthy, we would like to see more police presence in our area. And with the time when Oakdale, the city of Oakdale is asking for more funds for a new pub, uh, public-
Public Works.
Public Works building, I'm sorry. And, and in the police department, you know, the residents would like to know, hey, if we're going to support this and we're going to vote on this, you know, where has the Oakdale Police? And when we call them, will they help us out? And we're just saying here today, oh, Tanner's Lake Parks, Tanner's Lake Heights area, oldest part of Oakdale, please don't forget about us. Thank you for your time today.
And can I just say one little thing? Is there anything you can do about these weeds? Because I've talked to my neighbor and we don't get along too well.
What do we do about that? I mean, not, not just the weeds, but the barking dogs about the yard waste.
That's always, yeah.
I, I just recently had a neighbor that had an old washing machine that didn't work and he left it in his front yard. We can't have that. That's, that's appalling. It's ridiculous. And of course, as neighbors, we, we bring it up to one another and please do something about this. And we hope that they're going to be respectful. It took a little while, but the neighbor did comply. But we just want the police department to not forget about us. We're the oldest part of the city and we don't want the council members to forget about our area of the city also. Thank you, council members, for, for letting us speak for a few minutes. Appreciate that.
Can I show you this picture?
Could you hand them to our city clerk?
Sure.
Check them out after the meeting. Can, are you okay to leave them here with us?
Are you ahead of me?
I'm gonna leave them here with you. Can I trust?
Can I trust? I don't know.
Thank you all for listening to us.
Thank you. Uh, City Minister Volkers, can you send code enforcement down, start writing stuff up, please?
One hundred percent. Yes, we will follow up with you. Thank you. We will.
You get ahold of me then?
Yeah. Yes, we have you.
I mean, this is always that awkward time of the year between summer and winter months, but, and I know code enforcement has had staffing challenges, but
Yes.
just, we got to start writing them up.
We are, Mr. Mayor and council. We are staffed up now and we do encourage residents to use C Click Fix too, so we can track it. But we do have a new code enforcement officer, Chris, as he referenced, so we'll talk more to him.
Thank you. Could you send them down this week, please?
Sorry?
Could you send them down yet this week, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to talk under open forum tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, let's move on to consensus motions. Council members, we have A through H in front of us tonight. Are there any that, an individual council member would like to pull for individual consideration?
I don't have a copy of H.
Appointing.
Yeah, good point.
Appointing, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yep. Appointing Beau to the remaining term on the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so can I have a motion to approve A through H as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through H as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And consensus motion A through H are approved as presented. Next up is our time to check in with our advisory boards and commissions. When does EDC meet next? Do we need to appoint a new liaison for that group?
December.
December.
Does anybody know?
It could be next Wednesday.
Oh, is that the last time for the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Next Wednesday.
Uh, council members, are you all okay if I just cover that one until we get to the new year? Okay.
That's fine.
Um, Environmental Management Commission met last week, is it? Yeah. A bulk of their work was focused on the 2025 work plan. So they are looking at that in advance of our appreciation dinner and planning session with them in February, I believe. So with new commissioners on that group, they have a lot of new ideas, which is great. So they're going to start formulating it into a plan with Hannah, their staff liaison. And we will see that when we meet with them in February. Parks and Rec met. Councilmember Morecambe, you are their liaison.
Yep. It was a fairly brief meeting, but they had high praise for the new Willowbrook Commons Park. Everyone is absolutely in love with that new park in the north end of town. And I hope everyone gets a chance to go out and enjoy it. I've been there multiple times myself. And also their 2025 work plan was set. That's what we covered.
Wonderful. Ward of bid, none tonight, so we will go into staff reports. We have something from fire. Chief Wold, welcome. Come on down. Are you asking for money?
Yeah.
All right. I like it.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the kind words about first responder. I know, can't speak for Chief Newton, but our fire department really appreciates council and mayor, city staff support and everything that we do on a day-to-day basis. So thank you for that. We appreciate it. So I'm here tonight to talk through some approvals of some fire department vehicles that are currently a little ways out in the VERF. We continue to run into supply chain issues, price increases, delayed in inventory, and we're trying to stay ahead of the curve by ordering a little bit earlier and still taking delivery within the timeframe of the VERF, but getting ahead of it to try to alleviate some of those issues and concerns that we have. Currently, we have a new ambulance listed in the 2026 VERF. We're looking to order that this year yet. We still won't take delivery of it till first quarter of '27. There's no financial commitment until we take delivery of it. So we're looking to try to stay ahead of that. It's, it's becoming a thing for us and we don't see an end in sight. The other one is a assistant chief's vehicle. It's a response vehicle. And we're trying to get that ordered before the state contract ends the end of the week. And then there's price increases that go along with that and the uncertainty of who's going to get the state contract and what that delay and impacts look like. Again, that's a 2025 purchase and we won't see that until late '25 if we order it this year. So again, we're in line. No financial commitment until we take delivery of these vehicles. We're just trying to stay ahead of it and avoid some of those price increases and lead times and other factors that go into it. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, just a quick one. Didn't we just get you guys those Tahos? Or was that like five years ago already?
Wow, six years ago.
Was it that long ago?
Yep. So the ambulance, the, the Tahoe is a six-year-old vehicle and the ambulance will be a 12-year-old that we're replacing at the time that we take delivery.
Yeah, that must have been right when I got on the car. I feel like we just did it though.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's when you know you've been around here too long, right?
I guess. It all just kind of blends in.
Uh, council members, any other questions for Chief Wold? Chris, anything to add?
No, thank you.
All righty. Uh, look for a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the city administrator to sign documents as needed related to the ordering of fire department vehicles identified for replacement in 2025 and 2026 as outlined in the proposed 2025 to 2034 Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion of the second. Final conversation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go forth and order.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
It's so sad that we say that saying, "We'll get it in two-plus years."
I can't believe that was six years ago, all right.
Uh, next up, police. Chief Newton, welcome. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'll be providing information concerning the business Super Smoke located at 1029 Helmo Avenue. The business owner, Mr. Cliff, requested a public hearing after receiving an administrative fine for selling THC product without a license. I'll provide a brief summary of the situation. In early 2023, Super Smoke applied for a license to sell THC product. The city reviewed the application and found it did not meet criteria for a license due to its proximity to a daycare. On March 6, 2023, the city sent the business owner a letter informing him of the denial for the license pursuant to city code. On June 5, the police department conducted a tobacco compliance check at the business. The business failed the compliance check after selling tobacco to a minor. On July 18, the police department sent the owner a letter and an invoice for an administrative fine for the compliance violation. Mr. Cliff did pay the administrative fee as directed by the city. On September 30, 2024, the city was notified by the Office of Cannabis Management that Super Smoke was selling THC product without a city license. Unbeknownst to the police department, the Office of Cannabis Management told us that the business was selling high potency THC, which was outside of the scope of state law. In addition to that, they did not have a license to sell THC product from the city. Following, receiving that information from the Office of Cannabis Management, on October 4, the police department stopped by the Super Smoke for an inspection. The police department found that the business was selling THC without a license. The police department communicated those concerns to the owner and asked that they remove all of the THC product from the business. On October 15, the police department sent the business owner a letter and administrative fine for those violations. Mayor and Council, the owner's actions of selling THC product after he applied for a license and he was denied a license is clearly a willful act in violation of city code. The police department believes the proposed administrative fine is a prudent measure for conduct by a business owner who knowingly sells THC without a license. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, let's open it up for questions for Chief Newton before we move forward with this process.
Is there any ambiguity as to whether or not there's guilt here of selling without a THC license? I mean, is there any doubt here?
No, so the business owner applied for a THC license, and they did receive a letter with the official denial, because they were right next door to a daycare, and it was too close proximity to have a license.
Okay, but there's no question that he was selling regardless of not having a license?
Correct, and beyond that, the Office of Cannabis Management reported that in January they were selling high potency hemp, which is a violation of state law. Then they also did several more inspections during the year, and every time found that they were selling THC product.
Okay, so this wasn't a one-time thing, this was an ongoing issue?
Correct.
Okay.
Chief, can you clarify something for me? So the fine is based on number of violations, two violations, correct? What sections of city code do those violations pertain to? So one was the selling tobacco to a minor, correct?
Yep.
So that'd be Article 3 under Tobacco.
Yep.
The second one is?
So that was under the general provisions code, and after talking to our city attorney and consulting on that, it seemed like that was the appropriate area to make that administrative fine.
General provisions, but what is the underlying crime? Selling THC without a license?
Correct.
So the fine structure within each section, whether it's Tobacco or THC, are standalone provisions. So shouldn't it be two $500 fines since those infractions reside under different bodies or different chapters of the city code, or different sections, I should say? So there's the 500 for Tobacco, okay, that got paid. Shouldn't THC be a first violation since that is a first violation under that section of the city code versus a second violation? Is, well, maybe this is a question for Jim. Can violations be stacked in that manner? Or do we have to take infractions of each article of the city code as standalone areas?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, let's see if I can simplify this.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I didn't help, so.
This is before you, with the opportunity for the licensee who holds a tobacco license to appeal the administrative fine for a second violation of the tobacco license ordinance, okay?
But that's not what Chief Newton just said.
Okay, let me, okay, okay. I understand that. And it is a little confusing, I agree with you, okay? But that's why this body is the body that, under the code, has the right, the licensee has a right to a hearing for violating, granted another provision in the code, but it's still, he holds a license from the city, and I think the council has discretion to say, okay, we're gonna, this is a second time that you violated your code provision relating to your tobacco license. Okay, now, that's in the tobacco licensing section of your code. Independently of that, there's another chapter, in Chapter 4, that, where the city council many years ago created a process for, I'll call it, minor code violations. Rather than taking them to criminal court, you issue an administrative citation, and that's handled administratively. Again, they have a right to a hearing, and I believe the maximum fine under that is $1,000, I think. Okay. So here, you, okay, you probably could have done both, okay? Let me explain why. In cities that don't have the administrative hearing process, they get cited and they go to court, and they plead guilty or not guilty, and once that process is completed, what most cities will do is bring it back here then for the licensing penalty. So they would get both a criminal fine if they're found guilty, and then a civil penalty. Now, that's not your process because you have the administrative hearing. So you actually could have done both, but because they're both civil in nature, we're only doing one, and we're not getting, he's not getting charged twice. Now, it just so happens that because this is a second violation, the administrative penalty that's being imposed, $1,000, is exactly the same as the maximum penalty you could have done under the administrative. So I, it is a little confusing, but the reason they're here today is because of the, where they request to not have the city council impose a $1,000 penalty for the second violation of their tobacco license.
Okay, so I'm not sure you answered my question, though. So maybe this is the different way to frame it. Is there something in the Tobacco chapter or a condition of holding a tobacco license that says you have to be law-abiding? You can't have any other infractions of the city code? Is that why selling THC without a license is being stacked in the Tobacco column?
Right, that's a good question. The answer is, there's nothing specific in the Tobacco license that says, don't violate your DSC regulations. But I believe the council has inherent authority to oppose that second penalty when a licensee violates a provision in your city code related to selling products that require a license that they didn't obtain. Now, could you do it if it was a completely different violation, like junk vehicle? Probably not, okay? But these are so closely tied to each other, I think you can do it. But it's a good question and a fair question.
Okay. Sorry, everybody, I gotta look up the process, because I know the city code spells it out. Or Jim, if you have it handy.
I have the code sections handy.
Process, oh, I'm sorry. Any final questions for Chief? We can also check back with him at the end. Okay. So Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, the license holder has the ability to provide comment, to call witnesses, to present evidence, and then back for council consideration?
Correct.
Did I cover everything?
Yes.
Okay. Is the applicant here tonight?
Manager of Code Enforcement.
Please feel free to step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Mahmoud Hanoun. I live at 1610 Grenade Avenue North in Oakdale. I'm the manager for the store, so we have basically this second citation we got regarding selling THC without a license. Before this citation got received, Officer Will Fisch stopped by on October 4, and he gave us a letter saying this is a courtesy notice to remove everything immediately from the shelves before any, like, further actions get applied. Also, we will do, like, a compliance check in the next two days just to make sure everything is correct. And I had personally, like, a phone call with him. On October 15, we received that citation. So regards, like, the citation we received in June, that was, like, I take very seriously any, like, selling for minors. I do train my employees, sometimes things get out of your control. I did my part, employee got, like, and they know that you will get fired immediately without question asked if you, like, do anything like this, and that employee was fired immediately. Regarding the THC license, we applied for it in '23 when the law came in as a dispensary is thinking that we will be able to sell, like, everything. And then it's kind of like a lot of confusion around it. Then they came up with the law that there is higher potencies, lower potencies, and we had the state stopped by many times at our location. The first time, we didn't get anything, they just destroyed whatever they thought it's not right. And the third time, actually, he said, like, multiple times, and they found something wrong. The third time, which is basically when they told the police department or, like, the city of Oakdale that we don't have a license, they didn't have anything. They cleared that everything in the store is, like, with the limit. And in those three times, nobody mentioned that there is a license needed. All the warehouses, because, like, when we buy products from warehouse, they need a tobacco license. All the warehouses didn't request anything, so we didn't have any idea that this license could be, like, different than the higher potencies or dispenser license. If I had any intention to, like, legally, why on earth I would be filing taxes? Because taxes on THC product is 10% higher than the regular one, and all those filed, like, I would, I would be stupid to file those taxes if I know that I'm committing something wrong. I have no intention of, like, doing anything illegally. In fact, that we removed those products, it's about $40,000 to $50,000 worth of inventory it's sitting, just, like, because of their request. And we were, like, I spoke with Jake about, Martha Sim spoke with you about, like, getting an exception because our location been there before even the daycare and before the law came in. It's something, like, out of my control to be in that location. If I knew that law will become before I take that location, it's my fault, but the law came after I took that. I do have commitment of lease, I do have employees, I do have inventory, so, like, we were asking for two things, like, exception to have that license, and if I knew that I needed that license, I would be standing 10 months ago, and this is 10 just to request that exception. And for this citation, we just need, like, we got hit with so many that we need a break. And if we didn't, like, follow their request of removing everything immediately based on their language, courtesy notice, serve to you to remove everything before any enforcement, taking action, and I don't know if they did any, by compliance check or didn't, but I can assure you that if they did anything, there is nothing found, there is, I don't know if they did it even. So that's what I have to say, and I don't know if you guys have any question, please let me know.
Thank you. Are there any witnesses or other evidence you would like to present at this hearing?
I mean, all what we have is, like, the emails we got from them, basically, which is those, like, on city records, evident, like, there's not much, no.
Okay, thank you. Let's bring it back up for council consideration. Jim, have we covered all requirements under the city code?
Yes.
Okay. Council members, questions for staff? Anybody? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, under Resolution Number 2024-95, to hold a hearing and pass resolution upholding the administrative fine.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Resolution 2024-95 is passed. Next up, question for the city attorney. Can we conduct the rest, can we rearrange the agenda to conduct the rest of the business and then end with the closed session?
Yes.
Chris, are you okay with that?
Yes, there was a reason why I did, yes, it's fine.
So we're gonna do that last?
Yeah, let's move forward to Administrator's Report.
Mr. Mayor, we do need to come, we need to come back to start EDA, so either way, we have to come back. It's, we can't just end like we usually do and then close it.
Go home.
And take action at the end.
Yeah, we put it this way, because we thought it was more logical to put it under city attorney reports, but you certainly can do the city administrative reports first, go to the closed session, then we come back and adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
What do we want to do, guys? So we've concluded that. I think the police department will be in touch regarding next steps. Chief Newton is right behind you, thank you. I'm gonna suggest, let's just crank out the business, and then we'll just have two closed sessions, back-to-back, different bodies, but let's just check off Administrator's Report presentations, since the presentations we want for the public, because there's some public notices. So, City Administrator Volkers.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I have two items under mine. A is about Chapter 15 for the Parks and Recreation section of the city code. There are 1, 2, 3, 4 articles that have been revised. Discussion was held on the October 8 council workshop. We did discuss it, we've done, we've attached the agenda, track changes version, a clean version of both, of the new ordinance. And so what we're asking today is two motions, one to approve an adopt ordinance number 935, and then the other one is by title and summary to publish that ordinance.
Council members, any questions for Chris? All right, let's hit it.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 935, amending the code of ordinances for the city of Oakdale, Chapter 15, Parks and Recreation, updating certain language.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance 935 is adopted.
We got one more, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2024-94, authorizing publication of ordinance number 935 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Resolution 2024-94 is adopted. Chris, do you want to tee up the next one?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The next one is for Chapter 10. We did meet in two sessions, in work sessions, July 9 and August 14, to discuss these proposed changes to Chapter 10 in regards to general conditions and charitable gambling. So what also attached to the agenda is an underlying track change version, a clean work version, and then the corresponding ordinances, those two, there's two ordinances, 933 and 934. In addition, we have two requests for summary publications, one for each. So there's four overall motions we're proposing.
Council members, any questions for Chris? On either of them, I guess. Nope, all right, who wants to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 933, amending the code of ordinances for the city of Oakdale, Chapter 10, Liquor Control and Charitable Gambling, Article 2, General Conditions, relating to notice and hearing requirements and updating certain language.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance 933 is adopted.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2024-96, authorizing publication of ordinance number 933 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Resolution 2024-96 is adopted.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 934, amending the code of ordinances for the city of Oakdale, Chapter 10, Liquor Control and Charitable Gambling, Article 3, Charitable Gambling, authorizing and regulating the conduct of lawful gambling.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1798.87]
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance 934 is adopted.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2024-97, authorizing publication of ordinance number 934 by title and summary.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Resolution 2024-97 is adopted. City Administrator Volkers, one more.
I do not have any more.
There's a donation.
Oh, the donation, I'm sorry. Gosh. Yes, so we had a very generous donation by one of our residents. She would like to donate $100 towards the Veterans Memorial Beautification, so the beautification of the Veterans Memorial. So that will be earmarked for it. Ms. Catherine Tronson is the one donating it, so if the council is, so chooses, there is a resolution to accept that donation.
Councilmembers, any questions for Chris? I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2024-93, accepting a donation from Catherine Tronson in the amount of $100.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Resolution 2024-93 is adopted. And a very big thank you to Catherine for that donation. Council Presentations. I'll put it over here.
Vote.
Yeah, I got that one. All right, I got a few. Oakdale Fire is bringing back its Halloween tradition this Thursday, October 31, from 4:30 to 6:30 at the South Fire Station. South Fire Station is located at 6633 15th Street North. There will be free hot dogs, candy, and more. As always, the vehicles, you can climb around, hang out with our firefighters. We want to see those costumes. It'll be a lot of fun. 4:30 to 6:30 PM. I think there's a Facebook event also with the details, so check out the city Facebook page. It's on there as well. In partnership with Washington County, the City of Oakdale is once again hosting free pumpkin recycling through November 12. Oakdale residents may bring their old pumpkins for free disposal and place them in the dumpster located on the north side of the City Hall parking lot, located at 1584 Hadley Avenue North. The dumpster is available 24 hours a day, so please do it at your convenience. All we ask is that pumpkins must be free of glitter, paint, wax, or candles, because those aren't always compostable. So if they are good, clean pumpkins, toss them in there. We'll take care of them for you. So nominations for Oakdale's Volunteer of the Year are due this Thursday, October 31. Each year, the city recognizes an individual or group that has gone above and beyond in their efforts to get involved in the community and help others. To recognize a deserving volunteer or volunteers, complete the online form available on oakdalemn.gov. Again, by Thursday, October 31. The city has begun the process of updating our zoning and subdivision codes to modernize city standards in line with best practices, as well as align zoning districts with the 2040 Act Plan and ensure consistency with state and federal laws. If you would like to participate in this riveting exercise, check out our city website, oakdalemn.gov. The survey is available until Friday, November 15. I am sure everybody is racing to their computer right now. So, but no, it is important work. As we grow as a community, as our neighborhoods change, having a planning and zoning code that reflects current best practices is incredibly important, and it hasn't been done for a while. So please provide feedback. We would really appreciate it. This one hurts to say, it is hard to believe winter parking restrictions start on Friday. November 1, every year, like clockwork. No vehicles may park on city streets between the hours of 12 to 5 a.m. or anytime snow accumulation exceeds or equal, equals or exceeds two inches until the street is cleared of snow. And despite whatever myths and rumors you may hear, our cops do write tickets. They write a lot of them. So please keep your vehicles off the streets during those times. It is for everybody's benefit, so our snowplows can get through if it does snow. The one caveat that every year I like to call out is, of course, we want people to be safe. If you're gonna be having a group of people at your house and you think street, or you think cars are gonna need to be parked on the street overnight, we have a process available through the police department. You can fill out a form online, get a temporary permit. It's a one-time thing. Of course, we're going to always err on the side of caution and say, you know what? If you need to have your car out there for some reason, we are gonna provide that. Reach out to the police department, go onto the city website. I think it's probably just called Temporary Parking Permit on the city website, so you can just search for it on there. Real easy process, but if you need that, please take advantage of that. Finally, Election Day is one week away. Early voting is offered at Oakdale City Hall. Okay, I want to get these hours right because it's a big deal. So if you want to vote at City Hall, you can currently vote during distance hours tomorrow and Thursday and Friday, same hours. City Hall will be open on Saturday and Sunday from 8 a.m. to 3 p.m., so if you want to vote then, you can come on in and do that. On Monday, November 4, we will be open from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., so you can vote then as well. If you want to vote on Election Day, you need to go to your assigned precinct location, and you can vote from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. I don't believe precinct locations changed at all this year from two years ago. So if you have any questions on where your precinct location is or what you need to do to vote, go to mnvotes.org. All of the information is there, and please go vote. It is, it is a very important thing to do, and we all need to do it. So pay the bills. Claims roster, October 9 through October 29. I suppose our meeting got awful weak, so I'm like, that's a lot. $2.255 million and change. Councilmembers, are there any claims we wanted to pull for individual consideration? I'll look for motion.